Today, we have a proclamation. Whereas the city of San Marcos recognizes that an understanding, use and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating its infrastructure, sustaining its natural resources, planning for the future of its community, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout the city. And whereas the management use and exchange of geographic information is essential for effective decision-making, and whereas geographic information systems, also known as GIS technologies, are a powerful tool for supporting emergency services, homeland security, economic development, environmental protection, healthcare, long-range planning, community services, and much more. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training among various groups in our community to appropriately and effectively use this rapidly developing technology, and whereas the city of San Marcos GIS Work Group coordinates efforts to eliminate duplication, reduce costs, develop standards, and to facilitate the sharing and interchange of GIS data, methods, and knowledge. Now therefore, I, Jane Hewson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the sixth day of November 2023 as Geographic Information Systems Day, and do hereby call upon all citizens of San Marcos to learn about and appreciate the wealth of vital information that can be obtained using GIS technology. Thank you for what y'all do. Every year, we do this. There's like been more innovations, and y'all are doing more and more. It's all fascinating, and as it says, critical to decision-making, it is. So thank you for choosing this profession. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Hewson. We are honored to accept this proclamation as the GIS Work Group. GIS Day is an international event that allows GIS professionals to shine a light on the importance of location-based data and the systems in place that support officials everywhere in making better informed decisions. This year, the GIS Work Group would like to use our platform to honor one of our non-GIS colleagues for their partnership over the past year. Our inaugural GIS Ambassador Award is being given to a city of San Marcos employee who has shown true adoption and advocacy of GIS within her daily work and has furthered GIS innovation departmentally. Her utilization of GIS has created an avenue for enhanced data management, improved data reporting, and has strengthened decision-making. We offer accolades to Andrea Villa Lobos for her partnership in ensuring GIS serves our community's needs by providing accurate and accessible data. Thank you, Andrea, for sharing the city's GIS work and shaping the city's perception of GIS and being a true partner for the city of San Marcos GIS Department. Thank you.
Congratulations to you. Anyone else? Did she want to say a few words?
Sure. While I'm getting this award, really, you all do the brunt of GIS here, and so I think we want to recognize the fact that you guys support so many different departments. The Planning Development Services Department uses it a ton, but every single department uses it as well as addressing, making sure we can get to serve our folks in emergency situations. So also, thank you all as well.
Let the photos begin. All right. A proclamation. Whereas Ralph Gonzalez was born in Martindale, Texas, and has lived his entire life here. Whereas growing up in hard times, Ralph Gonzalez began learning to make it in the world when he dropped out of the seventh grade to support his large family. In doing so, he picked cotton, he worked road construction, he drove a sausage delivery truck, and he bagged groceries. And whereas one of Ralph's childhood memories was his family not being able to buy shoes and having to use cardboard to cover the holes, Ralph and his brother Joel began constructing small rocking chairs to help the family income. This endeavor sparked an entrepreneurial spirit in Ralph, and his new bride Mary began selling sausage rolls on the San Marcos streets on Saturdays, and by doing so, Ralph discovered a love of the food industry. And whereas in 1968, Ralph opened his restaurant, Picatacco, at the current location of Casa Maria, Ralph started with seven tables. They grew to a capacity of 200 customers. And whereas Ralph continued his life of community service in multiple ways, after major floods of 1970 and '72, Ralph provided food to first responders, cleanup volunteers, and many, many flood victims. In 1976, after hearing of a devastating earthquake in Guatemala, Ralph organized a community drive. Five truckloads of food and supplies was delivered to Guatemala from the people of San Marcos. And whereas in 1977, when United Fund cut off community support to Southside Community Center, he organized a fundraising drive which collected $15,000. Ralph also provided free meals for the Senior Citizen Center and Shibe Opportunity Center. He has supported the Hayes County Women's Center, the GI Forum, and numerous other organizations. Many Sam Markans have been helped by Ralph Gonzalez. And whereas President Jimmy Carter invited Ralph Gonzalez to the White House to feature his Picatacco menu on June 11th of 1980, Ralph arrived with a crew of 19 and a mariachi band. And whereas, never forgetting not being able to have new shoes as a child, Ralph determined that he would help as many children as possible to have new shoes. In 1996, Ralph founded the nonprofit organization, Nusotra Lahente, We the People. With the help of school district parent liaisons and the support of the community, the organization distributes over 1,200 pairs of shoes to children in the CISD, ranging from pre-K to high school. With 27 years of this shoe distribution, over 25,000 pairs of shoes at a cost of over half a million dollars have been donated to the children. And whereas in October of 2019, Representative Lloyd Doggett recognized Ralph and his wife Mary and the rest of the Gonzalez family during Hispanic Heritage Week with an award commemorating his lifelong contributions to the community of San Marcos, and he was again recognized on the 25th anniversary of the organization. Whereas Ralph Gonzalez has spent a lifetime helping and working for the people of San Marcos, but he would be the first to tell you, this is his community, these are his people. His dedication cannot be measured or compared, and even in his golden years, he continues to give from his heart to San Marcos. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jane Hewson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the sixth day of November as Ralph Gonzalez Day, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to recognize the outstanding work that Ralph Gonzalez did for our community and to express our appreciation to him.
You know, it's just a surprise to me that it was going to happen. So stuttering, whichever way I can do, I'm grateful for the great words you said about me. Wow, I didn't know that. But Jane and I go back many years. We've known their family, and I worked for them, and we did a lot of work together in other areas also together. But this is my group, and a lot of credit goes to all the people of San Marcos, but especially this group standing up here. Thank you very much, and we love you, Jane.
Thank you for your service to our community and for providing the opportunity for many of us to help give a little bit in order to further that shoe purchase. So thank you.
Yes, my name is Linda Cillero. I'm Ralph's sister, and I live in Houston, but I happened to be here for his birthday. He turned 89 Monday, and so after I heard that he was going to be honored, I decided to stay. But I want to tell you that we come from the greatest mom in the world that has kept us together. We celebrate our birthdays together, and I know wherever I've gone to, because I'm right behind him. And I've been here, I come to help him all the time and everything. My daughter's the spokesperson for him, but she couldn't come today. But anyhow, thank you to all the people that help him. There's a lot of people that sell tickets, that do everything. I come myself from Houston to help, but we're so grateful for the Houston, for the people from here that has given him, bought tickets, done everything, especially for the people that have been around him all this time. And he's got to be one of the greatest brothers in the world. He always believes that 10% of whatever he makes is for God, for the churches, not only one church, very different churches. But thanks to all of San Marcos. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Whereas, the Hayes County Food Bank represents a countywide effort to provide adequate access to nutritious food to low-income households and those who find themselves in a food emergency. And whereas in 2022, the Hayes County Food Bank provided more than 1,500 meal boxes filled with a turkey and traditional holiday foods that households in need could prepare in the comforts of their own home. And whereas more than 700 of these meal boxes went to families who live in the greater San Marcos area, and whereas the Hayes County Food Bank has officially launched its 17th Annual Turkey's Tackling Hunger Campaign in an effort to raise funds for this special holiday meal program. And whereas citizens of this great city can sponsor a family for Thanksgiving for just $30, and whereas the city of San Marcos wishes to demonstrate our support for the important work the Hayes County Food Bank does throughout the year, ensuring that no one goes hungry regardless of income level. Now therefore, I, Jane Hewson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as Turkey's Tackling Hunger Month, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to support this program by helping to provide families and individuals in need with the food to prepare a traditional holiday meal at home. That's not all they do year-round. This is just the special Turkey's Tackling Hunger item.
Thank you so much, and thank you to everybody who has already contributed. We could not do this without the community's support, especially one who recognized, Mayor Hewson herself, who donates personally to this every year, and the people at Little Guys Mover who help us haul birds all over this county, and to the people at Nighthawk Frozen Food who are bracing right now as the deliveries are about to hit their warehouse. But we couldn't do it without everyone chipping in, and I can tell you, this year, we are doing over 1,800 turkey boxes, and we already have over 800 people registered for San Marcos. So thank you so much to everybody.
I've been on the board of the food bank, and I know how hard they work. This turkey thing is a lot of fun. We've had some fun ads over the years, and so it's nice to see it's still going. So thank you. up? Y'all have seen how this works. If you're here to celebrate it, you may be in the photo, and we encourage you to do so. Veterans, mhm, yes, sir, come on up. Lisa, who's getting the proclamation? Who's receiving the proclamation? Okay. And we have our grand marshal here also. Okay. Are you here to support veterans?
Yes.
Well, come on up. Okay. Families are incredibly important. Okay. A proclamation. Whereas the Congress of the United States established Armistice Day in 1926 as a day to memorialize the cessation of hostilities of World War I, the Great War to end all wars, on the 11th of November 1918. And whereas in 1938, Armistice Day became a legal holiday set aside to honor veterans of World War I, and following World War II, after the greatest mobilization of soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen in history, the event was designated as Veterans Day to commemorate American veterans of all wars. And whereas, the San Marcos community will honor our veterans with a Veterans Day parade and Month of Service throughout to show our pride and respect for the veterans who have assured freedom for our nation for 248 years. And whereas, the city of San Marcos will celebrate with a Month of Service celebration to encourage citizens to honor and celebrate veterans by decorating their homes and businesses, submitting photos and stories about their veterans, writing letters to veterans in veteran retirement homes, making donations to the Hayes County Food Bank, and sponsoring remembrance wreaths across America to be placed on veterans' gravesites at the San Marcos Cemetery. And whereas, the parade marshal for this year's celebration is U.S. Army Colonel Jack H. Pryor, who, following his first tour in Vietnam, graduated from U.S. Army Officer Candidate School and then went on to serve for 27 years as an airborne combat infantryman. Colonel Pryor completed two more combat tours as a junior officer and as a field grade officer, was recognized as one of the Army's preeminent trainers and educators. As a colonel, he would command the U.S. Army Garrison in Panama. Following his retirement, Colonel Pryor pioneered 52 revolutionary government best practices and developed multiple nonprofit and commercial businesses. His combat awards include the Civil Star, three awards of the Bronze Star Medal with V for Valor, four awards of the Purple Heart, the Master Parachutist Badge, and the Combat Infantryman Badge. Now therefore, I, Jane Hewson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as Veterans Month of Service, and call upon the people of San Marcos to honor our soldiers, past and present, by flying the flag of our nation and participating in the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th and the Veterans Month of Service celebration throughout November of 2023.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city of San Marcos for recognizing all our veterans. I'd like to say thank you to all our veterans, past and present, and all their families. A lot of people don't realize how much sacrifice the families make on part of the veterans. So I appreciate this, I appreciate this honor, I appreciate all our veterans that have served, and we should all honor them throughout our lives. And if you have a family member that's a veteran, please don't forget to say thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Morris, do you have a couple more words to add?
Yes, we'll be celebrating with the Veterans Day Parade this Saturday. We'll be closing off downtown. The parade will proceed from Hopkins Street all the way through downtown. We have lots of entries this year for the parade. It will begin at 10:00 a.m., so we're very much getting prepared for that, as well as the whole Month of Service, our Wreaths Across America. Our goal is to lay wreaths on over 810 gravesites in the San Marcos City Cemetery, and we're about a little less than halfway to our goal, so we encourage everyone to do that. Everyone would like to lay a wreath, but it takes the sponsorship, so I hate to push that, but we really need it. You can go to our website, www.wreathsacrossamerica.org/tx0916. It's also located on our Parks and Recreation Department website. The last thing I'd like to add is, you know, in the proclamation, we get a little brief history about Mr. Pryor. The folks, he's a resident of Kissing Trees, fairly new to San Marcos, and the veterans group out there nominated him for this year's grand marshal. And what that proclamation doesn't say is really his whole history, which is incredible. I do know the history is located on our social media page that Christie has prepared, so please take a moment to learn more about Mr. Pryor and really all of his service to our country. Thank you, sir.
And of course, we always thank all of our veterans for their service and their families, because that is important to have that family's support in order to do what you need to do when you're gone, all those other things. So thank you all. It's gonna be another long one.
Of course. And I'm sure it's shorter than it looks.
Because he had, and it's woefully inadequate, I'm sure, but we've got a lot here.
Of course.
Yeah. A proclamation. Whereas Dr. Alvin Holt was born on September 25th of 1945 in Bay City, Texas, where he spent his childhood, graduating from Hilliard High School in 1964. Always a firm believer in education, he earned a Bachelor of Arts in English from Prayerview A&amp;M University, a Master of Arts in English from Southwest Texas State University, and a PhD from the University of Kentucky in Lexington. And whereas Dr. Holt joined the faculty at Southwest Texas State University in 1983 and became the first-tenured African-American professor in the Department of English. His life's work focused on African-American literature, folklore, and cultural studies. He was awarded three fellowships by the National Endowment for the Humanities and was named Professor of the Year by the Association of Black Students in 1989. And whereas Dr. Holt co-authored, edited, with colleague Dr. Sandra Mayo, Acting Up and Getting Down, plays by African-American Texans in 2014, and Stages of Struggle and Celebration, a production of History, a Black Theater in Texas in 2016. And whereas Dr. Holt retired from Texas State University in 2020 and was honored by the university in 2021, celebrating his work in multicultural curriculum development by naming a street, Alvin Holt Drive, at its Round Rock campus. And whereas Dr. Holt was recognized for his contributions to the literary world, he is equally well-known for his passion and encyclopedic knowledge of African-American history. And whereas Dr. Holt was a member of the Heritage Association of San Marcos, the San Marcos Historic Preservation Commission, the Hayes County Historical Commission, the LBJ-MLK Crossroads Memorial Committee, and the San Marcos Sesquicentennial Commission. And whereas a devout man of God, Dr. Holt served for several years as a Sunday School teacher and Brotherhood President for First Baptist Church, NBC. He served as a secretary for the Pride of San Marcos Lodge, number 494, PHA, for more than 30 years. And whereas Dr. Holt was a co-founder of the Calaboose African-American History Museum and served on the board since inception in 1997. He was the longest-serving president of the Calaboose Board of Directors and had an extensive knowledge of the people, history, and culture of the Dunbar Historic Neighborhood. And whereas Dr. Holt passed from this life into glory on September 16th of 2023. A memorial service celebrating his life was organized by his family and friends in Bay City, Texas, his birthplace, where he was laid to rest on September 30th. And whereas, a memorial honoring him in San Marcos will take place at the First United Methodist Church on November 12th of 2023. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jane Hewson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as Turkey's Now therefore I, Mayor Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the twelfth day of November as Dr. Alvin Holt Day and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to recognize the outstanding talent that served our community and to express our love and pride in the many accomplishments of Dr. Alvin Holt, trailblazer, scholar, historian, and humanitarian. Thank y'all for bringing this to us so that we could, uh, have this proclamation today. And I will see y'all at the Celebration of Life on the twelve. Um, anything else, anyone?
On behalf of the Calaboose, and definitely because of the fact that I'm an African-American woman here in San Marcos, I am so appreciative and honored that you guys would honor Dr. Holt in such a way. And as Mayor Houston said, all of the accolades that was, uh, in the proclamation does not compare to anything he really did in this community. But most of all, I like to, to call him a friend. I've known him for several years, there have been plenty of times I've gone to him as his, as, um, information about stuff in the community, just get, uh, I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. Trying to get ideas off of him as far as different things to do within the African-American community. But his friendship was invaluable, his knowledge was invaluable, and he will definitely be a missed component of this community.
I'd been with Dr. Holt for a long time, when Johnny Armstrong was there. And then I, Dr. Holt always called me Ms. Rose. And he was a wonderful person that is gone. But I really appreciated him. And we went all the way to Bay City where he was gonna be buried, we were there.
He was my teacher, and, uh, he was marvelous, and then I got to work with him in the community. And he was great, a great gift.
He was, I saw that encyclopedic knowledge and I thought that sums, that, that, that doesn't sum it up, but that certainly is one description of a very sweet and humble man who gave so much to our community, so thank you.